I'd like to call this evening's Planning Commission for the City of Greer to order. If there's anyone present on the Planning Commission staff or Planning Commission that would need to disqualify themselves from the cases being reviewed this evening, please state your name in case for the record and complete a recusal form from staff. Doesn't look like we have anybody, so. We'll now receive the minutes from last month's meeting, September 18th, 2024. I trust everyone's had an opportunity to review those.
Yes, sir. Move to accept.
First.
Second.
Mr. Osorno?
Yes.
Ms. Medford?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes. All right, we'll now move to the public hearing portion of this meeting. During this time, we will open and close a public hearing for each request. We will start with the staff giving the basic information for the requests and the applicant presenting their request. Afterwards, anyone wishing to speak for or against the request will have the opportunity to do so. All speakers should come to the podium and make comments beginning with their name and address. If you have not already, please be sure to sign in to speak with staff, or to speak. I don't know, we have a couple of people signed up, so. We ask that everyone that speaks during the public hearing keep their comments to three minutes or less. This is to keep the meeting running smoothly and efficiently. All right, so first order of business is AN 24-07. At this time, we will open up the public hearing for AN 24-07. Staff, please give us your basic information for the request.
Sure, thank you. This is an annexation request for one parcel. The address is 1035 Abner Creek Road. The parcel ID for the record is 5-28-00-020.00. It's currently in unzoned Spartanburg County. And again, the request is to annex in and zone to traditional neighborhood. So this is at the northeast corner of the Brockman-McClyman, Abner Creek Road intersection. Planning Commission did see an annexation request from this parcel two months ago and recommended denial for medium-density residential. So again, they are requesting traditional neighborhood at this time. And then you saw the five parcels across the street on the northwest corner at last month's meeting. This is the current zoning map. The blue, dark blue and light blue that you see is manufacturing and logistics. Again, the lime green that is across the road was last month rezoned to traditional neighborhood. And then south is various DRD neighborhoods. Future land use map, this is designated as mixed employment. The blue color that you see to the north of Abner Creek is all that same designation. And then south of Abner Creek Road is suburban neighborhood. These are two different views from both corridors at the parcel fronts, and that is all staff has for public hearing.
All right, thank you. Is the applicant present? Mind coming to the podium?
Hi, my name is George Meyer, 101 Rudy View Drive, Greenville, South Carolina, 29601.
And I'm Nick Myers, we're the engineer for the applicant. I'm with Seaman Whiteside at 701 Easy Bridge Road in Greenville. So we're here today, again, Ashley did a good job kind of covering the basis. We've heard y'all's comments, and we've gone back and are targeting now traditional neighborhood zoning. I think a lot of the concern before was due to kind of a transition in Greer zoning, moving away from Design Review District, which does not require plan submittal. So it was the open-ended higher density, I believe, that was sort of the main concern that we heard. And so we have since gone back. We can do the same exact project we had originally done or wanted to do under traditional neighborhood pending the upcoming zoning amendment. And so, again, our project really hasn't changed per se, but now we have a lower cap on maximum density to ease concerns if the project were to, for some reason, not be developed by Dreamfinders Homes. Few other concerns we heard were traffic. We've completed a traffic study. We are, the developers, willing to work with the City of Greer to work to implement any improvements needed. We will provide any necessary right-of-way for the recommended southbound turn lane that was indicated in the traffic study. I'm happy to provide more details on that if necessary, but just wanted to reiterate that the developer is willing to provide, dedicate the right-of-way necessary for those improvements when funding is available to construct all of the signal improvements, because currently it's a stop condition that's not signalized. So I think those were the two major concerns, but happy to answer any questions you may have. And again, thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, we have several people signed up to speak. Scott Gillespie?
Good evening. I am here not to oppose it, not to, but rather to ask if it's possible in the review of the engineers, and these are the folks that design it, and I understand their role, if it would be possible to, and I realize this is different, because it's a DRD, it's not a, I'm trying to think how to phrase this. A DRD normally was, it's in writing, you need to do this, this and this. And we don't have that situation. But I think it's fair to ask that what we, what my interest is, having, developing the subdivision across the street and all of the subdivisions around it, is that we keep a consistency of design and aesthetics on the landscaping. I realize it's going to be developed, I understand that. I think their plan calls for between 140 and 170 townhouses. Is that the proposed? And I'm not sure if that includes keeping the house. I hope they do. It's a beautiful house. I realize it may need some remodeling and that sort of thing, but I hope that's part of the plan. I don't know if it is or not. But my main reason for coming tonight is to say, just to get on the record, that I would support it if they are, do the same intensive landscaping that we did at Saddlebrook, keeping the distance of the backs of the houses from the pavement. We're at about 55 feet, some are 60 feet, from Abner Creek. So what I'm saying is, let's not push in the design as they do their design, and this is what they got to submit, is if they could keep the setback kind of equal to what's down the street, which what we did for Crescent Homes, which was, which is now Dreamfinder Homes, and keep that separation. But mostly important to me, and I think the neighborhood, is if we're going to have this, let's have a, let's have them commit as much as they are able to at this, with this kind of zoning, to do an intensive landscaping all along Abner Creek and along Brockman-McClyman. And I think with that, and with that plan of 140 to 170 townhouses, I wouldn't have a problem with it, especially the product that they're proposing, which is as they built at Saddlebrook, which is a very nice townhouse, but done very well, and it's also done very well in the market. So that's my statement. I'm hoping that it's, it'll be in the minutes, and that's what I'm asking, and they'll be able to hopefully follow that and do a great job with those elements.
Thank you.
I am Becky McLaughlin, 208 Lindbergh Court, Greer, 29651. I think the homeowners have a right to sell their property. I'm a capitalist, they've got a right to sell it. Our problem is not with the annexation or the sale of the home, but what happens thereafter and what happens to us. Since this property is zoned traditional neighborhood, I'm not going to take a survey, but I doubt that any of us live in a traditional neighborhood that has 170 townhouses in it. I think those things, as I looked at all the abbreviations, and Ashley sent me a description of them, I was just astonished that traditional neighborhood would contain 10 homes per acre. That doesn't sound traditional to me. My husband and I bought our home 11 years ago, our retirement home, downsized from 3,000 to 1,400, and that's a big downsize. And most of the homes in our neighborhood are 1,400 to 2,800. And we got ours 11 years ago. It's a bargain today, and we would like to stay there. But in the last few years, in the last five, 357 homesites have surrounded us, and I counted every one of them. And I feel it every time I pull out of our subdivision. Last week, we were at a quarry meeting, because it's not Greer, but it's Spartanburg County, expanding the quarry on one side. It's, it's, it's more than traffic, it's transientsy. When you buy a single-family home, you're likely to live there. I have neighbors that have been in our little community for almost 30 years, and we get to know each other. I'll knock on a lot of doors, we have barbecues, we go to church together. That's what neighborhoods do. That's what traditional neighborhoods do. I don't think a traditional neighborhood is a townhouse. And I understand, we started out in an apartment, a lot of people started out in townhouses, that was uptown for us. But townhouse owners and renters don't stay there. Traditional neighborhood is what we want to build in Greer. So I want to speak just a minute about the drug bust, because it was a shock to me. I'd been to Spartanburg to a meeting, was on my way home, and I heard there was a drug bust, biggest drug bust in residential area in Spartanburg County history, and I went, well, it's up there close to Wade Hampton somewhere. It's not where I live. Well, it was where I live. And when I found out it was just a stash house, oh, that bothered me even more, because that means they're running up and down 85, stashing it in our neighborhood. If they were in a single-family home, we'd find out fast, and they'd be gone, and we've already seen that happen. I know my dinner happened, and I'm sorry, because I was going to say some real good stuff. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Adam Wade, 278 Fayette Court. I normally don't show up to things like this. I'm a business owner, I'm busy all the time. But with the population growth and the way it's being grown, it's starting to have issues in the area. I was at the four-way stop one time, saw a fire truck trying to get to an emergency, it could not get through. Secondly, a lot of these homes that are designated as residential, you don't have any say if they're sold or if they're going to be rental homes. I've lived there for six years. When I first moved there, I could leave my garage door open, go to bed, not worry about it. Since then, we've had car break-ins, we've had drug houses, people cutting off my wife on a two-lane road, almost running over a bicyclist. And I think a lot of that has to do with the rental properties. These people, they're not committed to the community, they treat it as a rental home. You know, they're not going to be there forever. They don't create a community with it. That being said, since it is designated as residential at this point, or have y'all decided to designate it as residential already?
That's the request.
That's the request. To be honest with you, with the uptick in crime, I would rather City of Greer do something like put a police substation there. It's on the other side of Greer, it gives better response time to that side, and it gives the possibility for Greer City to annex more of that property. That's just a thought. But the way it's going right now with the rental homes and the people, I mean, they're just letting their dogs crap everywhere. I see them every morning, like over at Overlook, and the other one across the street, they don't care. They just live there. They're not expecting to be there forever. And now I have to worry about people breaking in my car. We had a break-in, what, last night?
Last night.
Last night. It's getting ridiculous, it really is. If I have to show up to more, I will. Like I said, I'm busy. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. There's only three people that signed up. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak on behalf of this subject? All right, seeing none.
Right, Wayne Merritt, 1035 Abner Creek Road. I've lived at this property for 25 years, and these people continuously talk about the property, where it's at, the people was talking about it. They moved in when that rock quarry was there, they knowed it was there, they moved in when some of these other houses. But I've had no problem with break-ins, anything. And I live right on, on both of the crossroads on my property, where the four-way stop is. And I mean, I like it where I'm at, but it's, you know, I'm 70 years old, and it's down, time to downsize. But, you know, it's very pretty property, and I don't like people, you know, turning against a property owner that's been there 25 years and never had the first problem. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else speak? All right, seeing none, and we will move on. Close the public hearing for AN 24-07. We will now open up the public hearing for miscellaneous 24-02. Staff?
Thank you. So this is the second round of amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance, or the UDO. As we kind of mentioned throughout the process of developing the UDO, that we fully expected that first year to come at least twice, if not quarterly, so this is, this is our twice. And we don't have a huge list of proposed amendments, but the categories that they're in are code enforcement, zoning, and that one is mostly for lot sizes for attached housing or townhomes. A couple of updates to the permitted use table, designated development standards, adding language for a site triangle, and then a few clarifications in the sign ordinance as well. And I'm happy to go through these kind of one by one, if needed, during business meeting. And that's all that staff has.
Okay. I guess, just to be appropriate, I'm sure you are representing the city, so. All right, so. Is there anybody here that signed up to speak for or against this subject? Seeing none. We will close the public hearing for miscellaneous 24-02. Now we're moving to the new business portion of the meeting. This is where staff will make an official recommendation on each item. If the commission has questions of the applicant staff or anyone in the audience, it is within their right to ask those questions. The board will then vote on each request during this time. After commission has voted on your case, please contact planning and staffs, the planning and zoning staff at your convenience to move forward with the next steps. You may be excused after the meeting, after your case is heard. Okay, this time we'll open up the public business meeting for AN 24-07. Staff?
Okay, so just a reminder, this is an annexation request with, a request to zone traditional neighborhood. It is at the northeast corner of Brockman-McClyman and Abner Creek Road. Current zoning around the property to the north is manufacturing and logistics. To the south, DRD neighborhood with a mix of townhomes and single-family. And then across the street was recently rezoned to traditional neighborhood. Future land use in the area north of Abner Creek is mixed employment, and then south of Abner Creek is suburban neighborhood. And then again, this is a street view of the property. So again, it is surrounded by a mix of residential and a fire station, some vacant land that is zoned for higher intensity manufacturing and logistic type uses. It is consistent with a comprehensive plan, and staff does recommend approval. We feel that it's a transitional zoning between those more intense uses to the north and then the lower-density residential to the south. Happy to answer any questions? We did review a lot of this information before, but I'm happy to review any of it again. The developer is planning a townhome community, again, 140 to 180-ish. They didn't have a final plan at the time. It really kind of depended on what would happen with the larger statehouse, whether it would be toward that upper end, or if they were going to keep it, it'd be towards that lower end. That is about six and a half-ish acres, or units per acre. Again, traditional neighborhood does allow up to 10 units per acre. It would be very difficult to get that number without going vertical. And then, medium-density that this board previously recommended denial for, which ultimately counseled it as well, that density cap was up to 17 and a half units per acre.
I know we had some discussion last time about some of the adjacent subdivisions, and they were like around the three to four or five?
There was a mix, yeah, there was a mix between two to four, I believe.
There was a statement made, I guess, by the engineer regarding if something was passed on the, with the amendments?
Oh, so.
Something being affected with this?
It, it would be. There are three or four townhome communities that are waiting for this amendment. I actually believe you brought it up during the UDO, and it got missed. Currently, the attached lot size minimum, so for townhomes, is 3,500 square feet, which is extremely large. It's more than double most of the townhome lots in the city. And so it, it was an oversight, but it got passed. So part of the round of amendments, that'll be this next case that you guys are looking at, will be no minimum lot size in traditional neighborhood for attached, just attached, and then 2,000 square foot minimum for suburban neighborhood for attached. So there are several, they, they designed what they're kind of planning to do, assuming that amendment will pass.
I guess this applicant, mind coming to the podium again? I know I have maybe a couple of questions, just, you said you had a traffic study done, can you maybe describe some of the mitigation that maybe came out about that?
Yes, sir. So I have an email from the traffic engineer submitted to DOT. Basically, they, and Greer's copied on all this, the city that is. So they are basically saying that they agree with the traffic study, however, basically that they're saying, you know, that while this development will contribute to the traffic at Brockman-McClyman enough to warrant some intersection improvements, they realize that it's impractical to justify requiring the developer to shoulder the entire cost of an interception, of an intersection upgrade, like installing a full traffic signal by themselves. And so essentially, what they're requesting is that the developer contribute enough land to accommodate these improvements when funding becomes available, and potentially enter into some sort of partnership with the City of Greer to help pay for the construction of these improvements as part of the mitigation for, for this project. That makes sense.
Yeah, and I can add on to that. The proposed improvement, uh-oh, I hope I didn't mess that up for good, sorry. The proposed improvement is a southbound right turn lane from Brockman-McClyman onto Abner Creek Road. And because it is a stop condition, a four-way stop, DOT did not want to see another lane there, and they also feel that very soon a full improvement signal or a roundabout will be triggered. This development did not.
Correct.
Trigger the need for that signal. So they asked, again, the right-of-way for either of those improvements, and then a payment in lieu for that southbound right turn lane. And then when the development or new development triggers that full improvement, then that portion will be used to pay for the full mitigation.
Just to further clarify, with DOT traffic signals typically, even if in the modeling software, it determines that there may be a need for a traffic signal, the development usually has to be built, and they have to verify the actual traffic counts before they fully warrant the traffic signal. Hence why the southbound right turn lane was deemed a necessary improvement, but to Ashley's point, the DOT did not want to add another lane to a stop sign condition because of the safety concerns. And so that's where the additional land and the fee in lieu to essentially wait until it was time to build the full signal.
I know you had mentioned earlier in your presentation that your plans had not changed, but I may be confusing it with other, but I seem to remember the first time it was presented, and I think that was where some of the questions came from. It was, it was maybe up in the air about single, a mixture of single-family apartment, maybe townhomes. So now, the plan is definitely to just do town, strictly townhomes.
So the project's always been a purely townhouse or single-family attached project from the beginning. The only question mark was whether or not the single-family home located in the center was going to remain and be sold as is, or if that would be raised and turned into additional townhouse units. Regardless of the scenario, we're still going to fall well beneath the maximum allowed density on the site. And so that's where the 150 to 180 number comes into play. If the home were to remain, we're in about the 150 range. If we were to demolish the home and build townhomes there, it's going to pick up another maybe 30 units or so, at most. But Dreamfinders Homes, they're in the single-family business, they don't do apartments or multifamily, so they're strictly townhouse and traditional single-family developers.
Okay. I just have one more question, too. Just looking at the map, so are you going to have, I mean, how many entrances, exits are you planning?
So currently, there are only two entrances planned on Abner Creek Road. We were unsuccessful in obtaining access directly to Brockman-McClyman, so the two currently planned entrances are a decent ways down Abner Creek to get it away from that intersection. So two, two entrances is kind of the short answer.
One on both sides of the house.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Darn, now I lost track of rules. Okay. Usually what I want to know about is how many parking spots and how many gar, how many places we're going to have to park cars. Now, you've got plenty of land, so how many, how many garage spots do each of these townhomes get?
Do you know the specifics of the townhouse project?
I just want to say, my supervisor is Garrett, he's the one that coordinates with Ashley, and unfortunately, he couldn't make it today. So I'm here to answer questions. Manu Clemson grad, so.
We're wholly engaged, you.
I can tell you that we have, we have laid this out with two surface parking spaces, and I would assume, based on Dreamfinders products, that there's probably a two-car garage as well. So there are a minimum of two, likely four, parking spaces per townhouse unit.
And just a reminder, in the UDO, that came up quite a bit. So for single-family homes, they have to have a minimum of two spots excluding the garage, and townhomes have to have two and a half per unit. So it is likely that they'll have some visitor parking, but again, we haven't seen the full site plan yet, but we will, we will definitely be reviewing that in thorough detail.
And, okay, just to, while we're on that subject, this is the only time this will come before us, if we accept, if we recommend this zoning, right? If council will pass this?
You would see a preliminary plot.
Questions, comments, motions? Move to approve. First?
Second.
We have a second.
Mr. Osorno?
Yes.
Ms. Medford?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes. Motion passes, please contact staff for next steps.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, we'll open up the business meeting for miscellaneous 24-02.
And I'm happy to give everyone a few minutes, if you don't want to stay.
If your case has been heard, you have the ability to leave. You didn't want an audience?
What?
You didn't want an audience?
I just didn't want to keep anyone from their dinner. But y'all are more than welcome to stay.
It's going to get real exciting now.
It's a recommendation.
So this is a recommendation to City Council, and they will see it Tuesday, November 12. twelfth.
If you pass, if you pass, you're going to hold it on. You have an active.
Correct, they're asking for a zoning request, not for this specific project.
They're not asking for a plan to be approved as a zoning request.
Yes, sir. Mm-hmm. Yep.
All right. Ms. Ashley.
So our second case tonight, again, is, um, a package of amendments to the U D O, um, and again, I can pull up, you guys all received, um, the draft redline version as an attachment in Novus. I'm happy to pull that up and go, um, section by section, if you'd like to see the exact language. Um, but the first topic is code enforcement. Um, our code enforcement officers, um, while using the U D O, have just had a couple of clarifying issues that they wanted in the language to make it a little easier to enforce. Um, so they did update the language, or are proposing to update the language, um, for the fines to be consistent with other city ordinances, and then adding language to explicitly restrict commercial building materials and storage and activity in residential zones, and then also updating the definition for commercial vehicle slightly, um, to address trailers.
How do you define activity?
Yeah. We might be interested.
Sure.
Span don't lose, please.
I mean, does that, you had a C P A that worked over their garage or room in their house, and had somebody come in and sign something on their basis for that?
No, so we have home occupation, it's, it's more about commercial vehicles, um, storage of activities, um, yeah, we do allow for home office.
Okay, okay. How are you going to stop it? I mean, you know.
Well, and this is sort of the way to stop it, is if they have, yeah.
Commercial stuff, vehicles.
Introduce you to my neighbor.
If all you got's a computer.
Yeah, yeah, a lot of it is, um, there are a lot of contractors, um, who have excess building materials that they are using on jobs, that they then store at their home along the side or in front of the garage, and it, it, again, it is very subjective.
Sure.
Um, but if their, their job is.
Bad.
That, um, it's usually pretty easy for our code enforcement officers to tell.
If they got four pieces of siding, it's one thing, if they got forty boxes, it's a different.
Exactly, exactly, so this just gives a little more teeth to be able to enforce.
So, so this, so if adopted, commercial vehicles in residential areas would be restricted how?
They're already restricted.
Yeah, not effectively.
Well, we have a very good definition now in the U D O, um, but this one adds commercial trailers as well.
So if you were, um, a contractor, and you have a pickup truck that's your work truck, can you not park it at your house?
You can park it at your house, it's just, um, because we, our definition defines, like, what that means, like a work pickup versus a personal use. If it's something you use in relation to your job, that's fine, but it's when you have the trailer with all the equipment behind it that's very large, and not a residential use trailer, that's when it becomes an issue.
How do I get this to show on the screen? Sorry, I'm not technically.
You have to close the presentation.
Okay.
Because they're really not, they're not restricting commercial vehicles, other than trailers.
I don't know what I did. Ooh, does not like me tonight, what? Hold on. Oh. What is that?
Give it a minute, because it took a minute when you put it over for it to come up.
Oh, it's weird, it's, um, like for me, it's off the screen. Okay, this is not what it looks like on my screen, but here's the definition of commercial vehicle. Um, again, this definition, um, got changed with the first round of amendments, um, to more clearly define what would be considered commercial again, versus more of like an F-one-fifty that just happened to be used for landscaping, um, and this amendment is specifically, um, to prohibit trailers. I'm going to have to kind of move this back and forth, sorry. Click the project, right there, click project. Ah, thank you. Okay. Oh, it's not going to work late with that. Yeah, so here's the fee change, and then. Okay, and so these are the changes in each of the residential district. It specifically adds food trucks, um, which our food truck portion of the ordinance also says it, but it's kind of helpful to have it in both places to, um, reduce any kind of potential conflict. And then again, the no exterior storage of building materials on residential property, and then no commercial activity. Again, that is very subjective, um, but having it in here does allow code enforcement a little more authority, um, to potentially issue a violation.
So that would theoretically make a food truck in a pool parking lot a violation.
In the what parking?
I mean, in.
The pool parking lot during the summer.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're talking about like an amenity, amenity's considered a commercial.
Amenity is considered commercial, so that wouldn't be a problem. It's more about parking it overnight.
Oh, yeah, I understand that, I mean, that's.
So it, I mean, we don't really get into regulating if they're coming to a neighborhood. We, we have it a lot in our neighborhood, too, we invite food trucks to come, like, during the summer on Thursday nights, we're.
As I've told R P.
We're not going to go there.
Code's is not working Saturday and Sunday, so you're okay.
That's true, that's true. Yeah, that's, that's usually what I tell people, um, for garage sale signs, which I probably shouldn't say on the record.
Was that a, was that a presentation on the Avenue Creek townhomes?
What? Um, okay. So, does anyone have any concerns with the code enforcement section? You guys good? Okay, so the next session is zoning, um, and this is where the update to minimum lot size for attached housing comes into play. Um, like I said, we are proposing no minimum lot size for traditional neighborhood and medium density, just let it, letting the density cap be kind of the control of that versus specifying the lot size. And then in suburban neighborhood, having, um, a little bit larger. Um, a lot of ours are in the seventeen to eighteen-hundred range, but for suburban neighborhood, we feel like, um, that closer to two-thousand range, a little bit bigger lots make more sense. And then we also removed build-to-zone standards, we were using that in some commercial, um, districts. It, it was a novel concept, but it really didn't work in practice. Um, it's much more aimed at main streets where there's, um, where it's really important to have businesses right up against the sidewalk, um, and it, it was becoming very difficult to enforce, so we switched it back to just typical setbacks for commercial districts instead of.
Don't we have that on the corridors?
For the overlay.
Overlay.
It's a little, it's less specific for the overlay.
Okay.
Um, this was a very specific range that the buildings had to be where the, the front projected.
You had a minimum and a maximum setback.
Yeah, exactly.
Yes.
Um, so it, it was really difficult to apply.
Any concerns or questions? Okay, so for permitted uses, um, we updated indoor amusement to allow it in business and technology, which again, we don't have any things zoned that at the moment, and then manufacturing and logistics, um, you know, if there were to be a bowling alley, skating rink, axe throwing, or something, I, I don't know that they'd really want to do, or gun, indoor gun range, um, makes sense in those districts. Um, we updated outdoor storage to be allowed in manufacturing and logistics, I think we always meant for it to be there, it just got flipped with another X. Um, we added daycare and preschool as an accessory use to the church description, and then updated fence and setback requirements for outdoor storage to be consistent. So we had two sections that talked about outdoor storage for light industrial and heavy industrial, and they didn't match, so we just updated those to be consistent. Any questions, concerns? Okay, design and development standards, um, we added language regarding site triangles, that was something that was formerly in our land development regulations that got left out of the ordinance, um, and it's currently not in our engineering manual, so we added that language back in, and that's again, just to kind of make sure there's no fences or structures.
What are, what are the site triangles, twenty-five by twenty-five or so?
I believe so, it's like fifteen for the collectors, and then as, as the roads get more intense, then they, the distance gets wider, but the lowest is fifteen, and then I think the biggest is twenty-five, is that right? I'm happy to pull it up.
No, you guys, just asking this.
Okay. Um, and then we also updated materials to allow vinyl for fencing material, um, just added that in the material standards. And then for signs, um, we added some language to applicability, I think it was, um, or I'll have to go to five-point-two. Um, we added and allowed minimum for wall signs, that was something we used to have in our ordinance for the smaller facades, um, right now, it's like ten percent of the facade, but we used to allow but thirty-two square feet as a minimum, and that had gotten left out, um, and we still think that's appropriate for the smaller facades. And then updated the public rights of way language, um, so I can pull up that section.
Yeah, the applicability was just being, I, adding more clarity about, uh, the requirement for permitted signs, um, again, for code enforcement, so that way, when we have unpermitted signs, we can enforce, um, our code.
So the very specific language is to add erected and displayed. And then the rights of way, um, we took out language that said, um, are subject to removal by the governmental authority having control of such right-of-way, um, really, if, if any sign is in the right-of-way, um, the county and D O T don't mind if we take it, they're not going to, so, just removing that specific language, allowing the city to be able to take those signs.
How does that work, like if they come back and, uh, you know, I guess, purchase additional right-of-way or something like that, they don't remove the signs?
What do you mean, if they?
I don't know, say, road got widened or something, they, they, they.
Oh.
Got additional right-of-way or?
Yeah, if they were, uh, if the sign was already there, it'd just be considered legal non-conforming. Um, I mean, again, if it was a D O T right-of-way and they were widening the road, they'd probably have to pay them for, for moving their sign, um, but if they just added right-of-way but didn't actually do an improvement, it would just be considered legal non-conforming, um, and so it could stay until it came down or was damaged. So those are the updates, do you guys have any questions or concerns?
I'm ahead.
Question, staff, motion?
Motion to approve, dag it.
Mr. Osorno?
Yes.
Ms. Medford?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Ms., Mr. Jones?
Yes. Motion passes, call yourself in the morning. Um, other business, planning and staff report.
Yeah, so we did want to give you a quick update on the PAC cases over the last quarter. Um, so you saw rezoning, um, for traditional neighborhood at Joe Leonard and Abner Creek Road, um, and did recommend approval, and that did get passed, um, so they did submit a very conceptual site plan with their fifty lots, um, they have not, at this time, submitted for full civil review. Um, Highway one-oh-one and Reedville Road, again, you saw this as an annexation for the Spinks gas station and car wash, but they did submit, um, preliminary, um, conceptual layouts for this part is the car wash, and then this portion is the gas station, again, this is the, um, intersection of Highway one-oh-one here.
Was there some swapping of some land they were doing?
Reedville Road, yeah, so they have a little bit of, um, the parcel behind it is, is their access, so they're going to be doing some access agreements. Um, they've worked with D O T to have very specific locations for entrances for the whole development, um, which will eventually, hopefully, be, um, a grocery tenant in the rear with, um, additional kind of retail center, um, so yes, they will have to do some, um, access agreements here and here, it's not really showing here and here. Um, and so they have submitted, right Heather, I should let Heather do this. They did, um, submit for civil, I believe we've done their first round of comments, and we're waiting for a second.
Spinks is going to build all the driveways for them?
Yes.
I believe so, yes.
And they're doing some landscaping, too.
Yeah, they're doing some landscaping, uh, too, so I think they've, you know, they've, I don't know their.
We're going to go back to that one, were they all right-in, right-out? No, there's one full service here.
There's one full service, and then two right-in, right-outs. And again, this, um, this piece is.
Payment for.
Um, isn't this the bank?
I think, I think it might be the next one down.
Or is it the next one over here?
That's smaller, yeah, that's the bank.
Yeah, so to the right will potentially be a bank, um, we haven't seen a site plan for that yet.
Because they hadn't found a bank that would, it's interesting.
Um, so at the intersection of Gary Armstrong and Wade Hampton, we had a racetrack gas station come to pack in August, um, again, kind of here's the aerial where it's located, um, here's the potential site plan, again, we gave them a lot of comments, and we haven't seen a, a site development, um, submittal at this time.
Is that apartment ever going to happen behind there?
I don't know.
They got diesel truck, like trailer, gas tanks.
And then, um, at our last PAC meeting, or. go forward with grading permit until they figure out some access issues. So we'll keep you updated on that. And then we have a home improvement retail store on Town Center Drive, um, that one has an S D P currently under review. And then the last one that you guys saw for Brushy Creek Towns Commercial Out parcel, that's where like the Green Laundry Lounge is in Brushy Creek Towns. Um, they have not submitted for civil yet, so we'll kinda keep you updated and at some point, some projects will just move to inactive and, and some will move forward and some won't. Um, as far as residential updates, um, in the last couple months, we closed out Vines Creek, Phase One and Two. Um, again, that's just south of the property that you guys saw tonight, um, the neighborhood that was currently, um, building out. The only thing they have left is their amenity center, so all the other properties have been CO'd. We signed a plat for Blue Ridge Villages, um, that's up in Blue Ridge Plantation, um, single-family homes, kind of right above, I believe it's the Meadows. And then our current plaits under review are the Tryon Street Town Homes, um, at the old radio, um, facility that you guys saw back for rezoning. Um, it's a DRD project with fifty-four Town Homes. And then Covington Village, Phase Two, uh, their final seventy-four Town Homes, um, are under review. As far as, um, we currently have six hundred and fifty-eight under construction, that's a pretty high number, our peak, um, was in the seven twenties. Um, our low was, you know, anywhere from three to four hundred at the beginning of last year. And then, um, we do have a pretty low inventory, this three seventy-nine, we haven't really gotten below four hundred since I've been here. Um, we usually run more in the five to eight hundred range, um, but again, we do have two projects that are under review for plat, so just kinda keep you updated as we see trends and-
Yeah, these aren't all the subdivisions under construction, are they?
These are, mhm, to the right.
But Crossing at Abner Creek?
Hmm?
Crossing at Abner Creek?
Well, it's only grading. So once they, yeah, once they get a final plat, yes. So once they get a final plat, they're on this list. So yes, that one is in the queue. I almost put the projects grading, but, so Crossing at Abner Creek is grading and, um, Valentine Town Homes is grading, so they'll be the next to do final plat. Lots of activity, we are, um, can't remember, Ruthie told me how many homes we had housing starts this year, but-
Good meeting.
Um, we're not at our highest, which was like twelve hundred, but we're already higher than last year.
As far as what?
Housing starts for the year. So, and, um, just as my other two quick updates, um, council did adopt impact fees, so as of October eighth, they are in effect. Um, we've already collected several on residential, um, and we have a meeting on Wednesday to just clarify commercial-
Would it apply to people like that purchased the lot or house, a new building permit for some of these lots that are already plotted?
As plotted, yes, um, if they've pulled a building permit.
Okay.
So anything that hadn't pulled a building permit moving forward, although-
Cash right there.
DRD projects are not eligible because they're considered significant legislation, um, that council adopted when they adopted the zoning. Um, and then any project that we had an annexation agreement for is also not eligible. So a lot of these current lists that you see, um, are not eligible for impact fees. Um, I think, you know, as we get new ones coming in the mix, um, eventually we'll get to a point where all of them are. Um, but until these build out, um, I'd say three fourths of them are not eligible for fees at this point.
Oh, wow.
Well, that makes sense, I mean, you know, that they're, you know.
Yep. Um, and then, um, just be on the lookout for a save the date for board appreciation luncheon, which is Thursday, December fifth, from noon to one thirty P M. You guys will get an email soon, um, Ms. Medford, for, we usually cater a lunch and invite you guys, and if you can't come for the whole time, please feel free to come and grab at least a to-go box of good yummy food as a thank you for your volunteer commitment.
The largest group present, planning.
You do, you do, you always represent and we appreciate it.
We always win that. There's no trophy for it, but-
Yeah, we'll, we'll invite, uh, we'll invite, uh, Mr. Holland too, um, and I'm not sure if anyone saw the council meeting, but council did, um, do a special recognition for Mr. Holland for his, um, long-term service to the city as well, last month.
Training hours.
Training hours. I will send out some links this week.
Oh, you can get the links? Can we just do it from our, okay.
I'm on video too, yes. I will send out some links and, um, sometimes if you guys would prefer to come in, we're happy to do that too.
I prefer links. Um, oh, he, here's one. I know she hates DDR.
I do not hate DDR.
There's a training opportunity for, of course, if it require work, you'd have to figure out how to tell, explain to us why they're bad.
Well, we talked about it quite a bit during the U D O development. Um, they're, they're challenging on the developer's side as well as the staff's side. Um, I mean, it's, it's, it's a one-size, you know, each, each zone has its own rules, um, so it becomes an enforcement just issue. It's, it's not that it's hard, it's that it's not an efficient use of staff time. When you have zones that have been vetted and you have a new U D O that has these options, it's important to use them. Um, and it, we did do some updates to the DRD guidelines to more closely align with M A S C guidance, um, as far as mixed use and mixed product. Um, and it is challenging for the developer because if, if they make any changes, again, they have to go through the process all over again. So, um, a lot of developers aren't fond of it either, they just used it because we didn't have zoning districts that allowed for Town Homes. Um, so it was sort of the only way they could get what they wanted. Um, but I'd be happy to give you a very at-length training.
You did a pretty good job there. I mean, I don't much care about, well, I guess I care about the developers. Y'all wasting time does bother me.
I, yeah, that, I just say inefficient.
There's only two of you, I mean, you know.
Oh, well, and we did make an offer, um, so we will hopefully have a new planner at your November meeting, but I can't say much at this point, cause it's not completely official yet, but fingers crossed, everybody.
That, uh, that Leo Jamestown, are they, are they like pulling, uh, are they, uh, calling for, uh, inspections and stuff all at once? It seems like they're building the entire thing all at once. Are they, there's two hundred and seventy-nine, like they call inspection for like all two hundred and seventy-nine?
They, they are-
That's what it seems like they're doing.
They, they are phased, but, um-
They probably did that because the impact phase.
They might, I mean, it's pretty impressive, I don't-
It was on October seventh.
I don't know that I've seen something quite that large be built all at once.
Yeah, they're, they're, um, they're a DRD project, so they're not eligible for fees anyway.
Oh, oh, yes.
So they're built more like an apartment complex, um, so they, yes, they did phase, they did four phases, um, so they are kind of rolling while the first phase, um, has recently just gotten CO's in the last two weeks.
Okay.
Um, the fourth phase is, is still working on like framing inspections.
Okay.
So they're, they're at various places, but they do, um, plan to be completely built out by April, so they are moving very quickly.
Yeah.
Mhm, it's a good question. It's a really, um, unique project.
It is.
So if you haven't driven through there, um, encourage you guys to do that.
Yeah, cause it is all Town Homes, right, and single-family? I mean, not all Town Homes, there are some detached-
They're a mix of single-family, um, duplexes and some stacked duplexes.
Oh, they are stacked, okay. I didn't remember that, okay.
Yeah, so they're a mix of those.
And it's all rental, right?
It is, mhm, no lot lines, it's, it's-
We had, you know, and they raised the question about rental homes, I mean, we don't have any ordinance in our, that-
We don't, we've explored it, um, because we do have two communities that, um, you know, in, were designed to be for sale that are now, they were sold, but they were sold to one person that owns all of them and now runs it like a rental. Um, so we did explore that with the city attorney, um, at this time, we don't have any regulations that would prohibit that.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it's, it's just the way it is. I mean, some people can't afford a house, they have to rent, you know? Um, it's getting harder and harder, more and more rental.
I mean, I'm usually in favor of Town Home Development, it gets us some housing at, at a lower price point, hopefully. Now, some of these don't appear to be gonna be at a lower price point than ones we talked about tonight.
All right. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Are y'all done? Staff report?
Oh, staff is, staff is done, if someone wants to make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, adjourned.